Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If your plans, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Loving God, Creator, of all of us, we give thanks that we live in a place of history and opportunity. Give us the wisdom to plan wisely and to provide those resources that will enable all of us to live to the fullest of our potential. In this, we pray in Your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the evening's rule, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward 2. Louis Tonsmyer, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Cory Pruitt, Ward 6.
Mr. Lovell, those phones come with a vibrate feature, do they not?
I'm well aware of that, sir. That's what I'm saying right now. I forgot to do that.
We've all been there and done that, so I just couldn't pass the opportunity up to pick on you about that. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from May the 15th. Council, you've had these well in advance of this evening. And the chair will entertain any edits, additions, deletions, or if there are none, a motion for approval.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved unanimously. We have a presentation tonight. Mr. Jones, if you'll please get us started with that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We have Kathy Nguyen with us tonight. Kathy works for the Cobb County Water System. She's also the chairman of the Georgia Section of the American Water Works Association. And she is here to present us a ward for some good tasting water. And I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for having me. I am Kathy Nguyen, and I'm the chair of the Georgia Section of American Water Works Association. And what that really means is I have the pleasure of representing all the drinking water professionals in the state of Georgia. And by far, this is the best part of my job, which is coming out to let everybody know what is kind of a well-kept secret, which is Georgia water professionals do an excellent job every single day in what I think is one of the most important values we have in a community, which is clean, safe drinking water. And the city of Cartersville and Bob and his staff do a fabulous job. We had our annual drinking water taste test back in April at our spring conference. And I'm pleased to say that the city of Cartersville won the best tasting tap water for all of District 1. And so we're just here to kind of recognize their hard work. It takes a lot to make a system like that function, the infrastructure in the ground, and especially the people that are operating that infrastructure and those systems. And you guys should be really, really proud of what's going on in the city of Cartersville. So I just want to ask Mr. Jones to come up and receive his recognition.
Go. Go. Return and let Rebecca get a... Thank you.
Can we drink to that?
Absolutely. A toast perhaps? Well done, Louis. We do have a series of second readings of ordinances. Mr. Manino, if you will get us started with AZ 14-01.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The next four items are all second readings. They've been properly advertised and posted. Appears to be no conflicts of interest. And again, they are second readings. Have been no additions or changes since the first reading. And the first case, AZ 1401, is a request by Michael Howerin. It is annexation in zoning to the GC zoning category. This site is part of the Donut Hole Initiative. It's approximately a one-acre site located on Highway 411, completely surrounded by the existing self-storage facility out there. The plans are to incorporate this into that existing development. The plans have been in the process of being reviewed by the city, and it's all subject to this final action before they move forward with that development. And again, it is two actions, the zoning action and the annexation action.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? All right. Thank you, sir. At this point, we'll open up a public hearing relative to case AZ 14-01. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close that public hearing. And council will now take up the zoning... All right?
Yes. You doing good?
Thank you. Actually, that was a public... I did mess up.
No, you had a public hearing.
I needed a public hearing. That was relative to the zoning piece of this action. And now we'll open up a public hearing relative to the annexation portion of AZ 14-01. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. Now, seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. And in council, we will now take up the annexation portion of this request, as whether or not to allow this to be annexed into the city. Are there any other questions or discussion to be had on this item? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the annexation portion of that request is approved. Now we take up the zoning portion of that same request. And again, any discussion or questions? And if not, a motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries as well unanimously. And so then we'll move on to AZ 14-02.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This is also a Donut Hole Initiative, annexation, that this property is in an area that's completely surrounded by city jurisdiction. This is an approximately two-acre tract located on Cherokee Circle. The applicant is looking to bring it into the city and develop it as residential with the R-20 zoning category. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application, and staff also recommended approval of this application.
Okay. Any questions for Randy on this item at this time?
Mayor, I've got a question. Mr. Manino. Randy, I know this initiative, I know the Donut Hole initiative and why we're doing it. And how do we contact people? There's no charge when we're trying to fill in a Donut Hole for this. But do we contact people in different areas we're trying to fill in or across the city?
Initially, we had a big campaign and notified all the property owners with property that was completely surrounded by city jurisdiction or the Donut Holes, you know, the county properties. Again, at that point, we had tax data, we had cost of utility data, lots of data available for everybody to look at. And again, we requested that council eliminate the fee for those particular annexations because Public Safety had requested it. It's much easier for them to respond to a call when you're not going through city jurisdiction, county, then back to city. And it's much more consistent that way. Then, the following, every couple of years, we'll send out a letter. We have a master list of properties that still are surrounded by the city jurisdiction, but in the county.
That's what I was wondering, how we do that.
Every few years, we'll send out a new letter. You know, again, we've never forced somebody to do an annexation. We've always had it to be a voluntary thing, so...
Thank you. I just wondered how you targeted after that initial push. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Does that letter go to, for example, High Moon Drive? You have about 40 different properties up to there, donut types and in the city. I know you sent out, after a couple of years, you sent out a notice to the county people in that area. But do you alert the city people?
Along that portion of the road, some of it is, like you said, some of it is county, some of it is in city jurisdiction.
City here, county, then all the way top of the hill, county and city.
That is correct. And again, the city has never done a forced annexation. So it's up to the property owners in that particular area if they choose to come into the city to go through the application process. I don't believe those are a Donut Hole up there, but I would have to look at the map.
Most of them don't want to come in until it's time to ride the bus to school, you know.
Yeah.
What were the fees, typical annexation, what are they?
Approximately $300 or $400 because it's a zoning, too. Because you go through the process, the same process as zoning. And when you annex it, you have to bring it in with a city zoning category.
Okay.
So...
Thank you, Randy. At this point, we'll open up a public hearing relative to the zoning portion of this request, AZ 14-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the zoning portion of this request and open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of the request on AZ 14-02. And seeing none, step forward. I will close the annexation public hearing. And now, council, you'll take up the issue of annexation into the city relative to case AZ 14-02.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And now for the zoning portion of that request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Manino, this is a zoning application, 14-02.
And with the two, like the two annexations, this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. This is an eight-acre tract located along Opal Street. The property is currently split-zoned. Half of the property is currently zoned MU with the other half being R-15. They're looking to turn the entire tract to the MU zoning category. Everything across the street, Opal Street, is currently already zoned MU. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this request, this application? I'll open up a public hearing relative to case Z 14-02. Once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And council, it is in your hands.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one, special use application. This one's going to be real tough, though.
Again, this one is a second reading, and there have been no additions or changes since the first reading. As we previously mentioned, this is a use permit for a church located at 205 West Cherokee Avenue. The church has been there many years prior to the city's requirement for a use permit for churches in this zoning category. This is basically just a formality because the church is looking to do some slight expansion of the buildings, and this will bring it into compliance with those current requirements. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Any questions for Keith on this, excuse me, for Randy on this item? Thank you. And I'll open up a public hearing relative to the special use exception. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And council, put it before you.
Off a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now we have a series of first readings of ordinances. Mr. Lovell, if you'll get us started on the alcohol festival ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Basically, as y'all may recall, through y'all's work sessions and visiting sessions, it was decided that y'all wanted to have a city-sponsored festival provision, which would allow for city-sponsored festivals only, the alcohol sales to be available at those festivals, or alcohol to be provided. As a result of that, staff has worked out a proposed ordinance. It has been recommended for approval by the Alcohol Control Board, and it is now presented to y'all.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any discussion on the contents therein of that festival ordinance? No, we had a, we had a work session relative to this. We made our recommendations, went through the Alcohol Control Board process, and now it comes back to us. There is no vote on this at this time, but... Randy, any further discussion or clarification that's needed at this point?
There is, because there's been some state law changed, I think. The chief and I were discussing it after the work session. Chief, do you mind clarifying what your opinion is on entrance criteria may include, but not limited to prohibiting persons from entering with weapons? That's... How do we define that area? Do we define it as a city area or how?
And you're referring to people carrying weapons inside those? I would defer to a legal opinion on that before I took any action, because I don't know where that would fall in that description.
Basically, all of the state law provided to allow that to be done. There are exceptions to that for people being allowed to carry weapons in. And one of those exceptions is whether or not the event would be so-called secure admittance of some type. And, you know, with the city actually controlling the festival ordinances and the applications, y'all will be making a decision on each one whether you want to make the entrance requirement so restrictive enough that they meet that standard under the state law that you could actually search for weapons and tell people they would not be allowed to bring them in. Or you may not want to do that, and then people are allowed to bring weapons in to any public area they want to pretty much under the state law. That is something that whenever y'all have the first request, that will be one of the items y'all will make a decision on whether or not to approve when you approve the type of security required for that entrance. There are ways you can approve that that will not allow guns there.
Different scan.
You have to have some sort of security process there, whether it is metal detectors or personal scanners. And you have to have police presence, and it cannot be open to the general public. Everybody involved has to go through the same scan. It's got to be like a secure building. You know, it's the same requirement as if you won't want a building to prohibit weapons. You have to have a procedure in place to check people coming in, and then post it that no weapons are allowed, and security on the premises.
You're saying a festival would have to have the same kind of security that this back door will eventually have to have?
That any building would have to have if you wanted to ban weapons from being allowed in the festival area.
I mean, there could be people in the audience right now with weapons on. We don't know. You may have one. I don't know.
I don't.
She does.
So he does. If he said, "I don't," I mean, we know he does.
Keith's going.
Yes, it's this right here.
Keith, do those, do those come in a portable kind of, I mean, this is all a big change for the state. Will those...
They're, the units can be moved from location to location. They're not necessarily fixed. Like, we have one at the city corp building that they keep putting in various locations. All it takes is a plug.
Tear-off sheet on the cost. Do you recall those costs that you gave me on that little tear-off sheet, chief?
Well, you can get a handheld for around $300 and a stand-up walkthrough scan for probably around $3,000.
And that's portable, chief? That can be moved from place to...
Well, to some degree it is, but it's not very...
Okay. I'm going to, great conversation. I'm going to kind of put my hands on the wheel here. We're looking at, we kind of wandered off the alcohol festival ordinance. I know the question is regards to the entrance.
It is.
I'd just like to kind of get, focus more back on the alcohol festival ordinance, if we could. Are there any other questions or discussion relative to any of the other items in there? Okay. And in the coming weeks, since we're not voting on it tonight, if there's other changes that, or clarification that we need to make, we got an opportunity to do that. All right. Next item is the budget ordinance for next year. And Mr. Reinhardt, if you'll get us started with that.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We'll be looking at the fiscal year 2015 budget. Next, please. This slide illustrates that we've got a decrease in the overall budget of $575,460, which equates to about a 0.4% decrease. Positive of the proposed budget, there's no city property tax increase. We're going to be doing a continuation of the five-year capital plan. There's increases in the water and sewer rates. We've incorporated goals from the vision session. And last but not least, there are no cuts in the current city services. This is a budget by comparison. Couple of major areas I'll point out is there's a decrease in the water and sewer service fund of a little over $5 million. This is mostly capital items. Another big one is the SPOSS 2007 decrease of $4.3 million. Again, capital items and debt service in that one. Next slide is the budget by comparison, by type. Couple of bigger items in there. In the personnel area, we've got an increase of 1 point, a little over $1 million. This is due to the salary increases and other cost of doing business as far as personnel is concerned. Purchase of commodities is another big increase, 2.4, almost 2.5 million. That, again, would be the gas and the electric. And another big area of change is the capital area, decrease of 4.25. As I mentioned, quite a bit of change going on in the water area, capital. This is a slide comparing the budgets for the last several years. As you can see, in 2009, we peaked at 1 point, I mean, I'm sorry, $169 million. We kind of slacked off the last, the next two years. Jumped, we jumped in 2012 to 157 million as we were building the public service building, or public safety building, and we've decreased the last couple of years. And again, follow that same suit in 2015. Talk a little bit about the lost, our lost revenue. As you can see, it peaked in 2009, 10, and 11.
And just, I'm sorry, just for clarification, those that aren't familiar, hearing lost...
Local office and sales tax.
Thank you.
Sorry. Again, you can see it peaked in 2009, 10, and 11 at 4.6 and 4.7 respectively. Has decreased in 2012 to 4.3 million. And again, 2013 decreased to 3.8 million. And we're on that same slide, if you will, going down in 2014. SPOSS is our special purpose local office and sales tax. Again, you can see where it peaked in 2007 at 4 and 1/2 million. It decreased, again, peaked in 2011 at 4.1 million, and has slowly decreased over the last couple of years. In personnel, a couple of points to make in here. It is, it is an increase of a little over $1 million. We had a net decrease of six positions. It does include salary increases.
Yes, I'm sorry, just to make, it's an increase of over $1 million.
A million dollars, yes.
We started saying 100, then it sounded like you said 100 million.
Tongue tied.
Just trying to save us both a little bit of trouble, Tom.
Thank you. Have an estimated increase in healthcare costs, both for employer and employee costs. It includes no unfunded positions and shows the pension plan city portion remaining at 14%.
And of that million, about 600,000 is raises, so that's not, that's not all raises. That's increase in health costs, maybe some retirement costs in there, too.
Next slide shows the estimated increases to the health insurance. You can see the, where it says Cigna Open Access Plan. We're currently, for a single plan, employee paying $50. The bottom, it goes actually to $57.50 for a single, and progressively goes out for those other types of coverages. In the pension plan area, proposed budget will remain, as I said, at 14%. The pension board is currently looking at different pension plans to hopefully become more sustainable in the future. We've begun that process. We don't have any recommendations. We hope to have some kind of recommendation within the next six to eight months. And a look at the staffing over the last couple of years. We peaked in 2009 with 367 positions, decrease in 2010 as we had some folks who wanted to retire early. Went back up in 2012 with 360 as our firefighters were supposed to be coming aboard. Postpone those until 2013. And you can see in 2015, we've actually decreased from 358 to 352 positions.
As I mentioned to council in work session, if you net off the 12 firefighters that we added when we opened the new fire station, that'd take us to about 340. And I recollect city staffing, the day I walked in the door in '96, was at 325. So there's, that's not real significant growth when you back out the added service of the extra fire station.
Operating expenses have a net increase of $148,000. This includes no, I repeat, no amount for the CBA or JDA bond payment. Couple of areas of major increase are increased costs of communication that citywide, with a larger portion going to the city of fire and city police departments. Have an increase in property and casualty insurance. We've got an estimated increase of 8%. And we have increases in loose pool payments as we've postponed buying things with cash and having to buy with borrowing funds. Those payments have now increased also. Purchase of commodities, essentially, we've got an increase there of $2.5 million. Increase in gas commodities and also, along with the increase in electric commodities. Debt service of a decrease of $818,000. This is due mainly to the TANs payment that we had last year. We also include fiscal year 2012 water and sewer bond issue payments, along with fiscal year 2013 water and sewer bond payments on the refinanced GFA loans. These are paid through the CBA, actually, the JDA second. And we've got money in those, in the budget for those. We also include school board appropriations, have an increase of $331,000. I've talked to the school system. They have indicated to me that they will be leaving the millage rate at the current millage rate, which is 18.23 mills. Tax Assessor's Office has given me an early tax digest. They're showing about a 1.5% increase in the tax digest. Post-capital projects, we've got an overall decrease of $4.2 million in this particular area. We do have SPOSS monies available, mostly in SPOSS 2003. Those projects will be done, dolphit ferry and street milling and debt payments. We have water fund projects include major renovation, not renovation, but completions of Edouard River Water Main replacement, Tennessee Street Water Main replacement, several other lines, sewer lines and water lines. And we have a Highway 411 41 relocation that the DOT is impending and making us, I wouldn't say making, but strongly suggesting that we get done. This alone is a $1.3 million project. And the general fund major areas are the fire, we're purchasing two fire engines and SUV, some police cars, public works, equipment and vehicles. So, and last but not least, there is no funding in the current budget for recreational trails. And this is due to the referendum that will be put on, hopefully be put on the tax for the tax increase in November. Just a few large areas of changes. As you can see, the fire department, we've got two vehicles and an SUV. We have an increase of about $1.1 million. The SPOSS 2014, we have a decrease of $827,000. In the gas, we have an increase of $288,000. Solid waste, we have an increase of $240,000. And water and sewer, as I've said before, we have a decrease of 4 point, I'm sorry, $5.2 million.
I'll turn it over to Sam and...
Yeah. Next slide. In work session, we talked about some council priorities. Get me on the right one. That one. No, not that one. The Dolphet Ferry row.
Rebecca, the Dolphet Ferry row.
Dolphet Ferry row. There you, oh, right there. That had been, that had been a council priority. We actually went in and crossed it out, 10 and 15-year financing on both of those. The 10-year, or the 15-year financing would require you to come up with another $325,000 from the budget. And the 10-year would require about another $450,000. Neither one of those are budgeted. Council talked about that. I don't know that they necessarily made a decision on it. Best to think of this as a companion to the budget, but it's not included within the budget.
I think we kind of reached consensus that perhaps this would be best put on the 2020 SPOSS list. But that option was presented.
What's the next one? Okay, this is the park financing. These are 10 and 15-year ge... Okay, this is the park financing, these are ten and fifteen year geobumps. The fifteen year finance, eight point two million dollars, at approximately six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars a year for fifteen years, it's about point eight mils of tax. The ten year, little less interest, but the millage goes up because you shorten it, just over a mil for ten years. Might be able to shorten that, there was some growth. Again, this is not included in the budget, this is best thought of as a companion piece to the budget. As Tom said, there are no funds in there to build the trails out, but there are within the referendum. So next a referendum piece, do you want to talk referendum, Greg?
This is a proposal that came from Recreation Advisory Board, staff and, and board members came up with a, a project list for, for the renovation of our existing parks, only there's no new development in this, in this projects other than the two trails, the two that we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars grant in one trail, and eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in another trail. But the Dellinger Park, most of the renovation is inside Dellinger Park, that would be softball fields, as you know, we renovated the Dellinger Pool last year, this, this would have been its thirty-eighth year, yes, and, you know, Dellinger Park, it, it's over, it's, I won't say overly used, it's used extensively, and there are, there are things that need done, we need to bring our buildings up to ADA compliance, this would call for the remodeling of the, of all the restrooms inside Dellinger Park, adding the new lighting to fields four, five, and six, it would.
That would be LED light, you know, I saw the story.
Well, I mean, that could be a possibility.
Lake Point's got LED light.
Yeah. But it, it also includes renovation to the Cardinals Sports Complex, where Cardinals High School softball and baseball play. It calls for renovation of restrooms at the Robert Ed Hicks Park where Cardinals Little League plays, it calls for renovation of Aubrey Street Pool, making it into a splash pad, that pool has been, has not been renovated other than replastering since its inception or since it was redone in, in the late seventies. The trend now is splash pad like we have at Dellinger Park, and that's what this project would, would do for that facility. Calls, well, we have a lot more projects than we have money for, but some of the things that we, that are also listed is renovation of the Goodyear Clubhouse, that's a facility that we've had since Goodyear donated, donated to us, we've put a, the only work, we've, we've fixed the roof, and we've added a air conditioning unit, but there's, that, that building has so much potential, and it, and there's money would, that is a project that is, would be set aside for that. But again, all, all this is for the renovation of our existing parks, and I, I do believe that, that it is, it is needed, we, it's past due on some of these things.
Okay, I polled council relative to the financing, and council wanted to have the referendum, we're probably looking at a ten year financing. Staff's role in this is going to be to put the numbers together and give the information, we're prohibited by law from promoting any of this, so we'll get the information in place and get the dates together, and those were again.
Basically, the last date under state law that the election can be called is September fifth, and the actual election itself is November fourth this year. However, we have been talking with bond council, and when you take into the count the need for the ballots to be printed by Kennesaw State, I think he is doing that service this year, they have come back that July seventeenth is the date that they are going to recommend that council take action on calling for the election this year.
So that's all the pertinent information on that, again, this is not included in the budget, it's probably best thought of as another companion document with the budget, that's all the information, numbers we've got to give you on that, is it okay, questions of him, if he has got any?
Sure.
Continuing on with the budget presentation, utility transfers is an increase in that area of four hundred and eight thousand dollars. All the major revenue streams for the water and sewer, electric and gas funds are all projected to increase. The agency, outside agency history and funding, you can see that this year's funding been asked for the same dollar amount as last year, six ninety-nine, two hundred, and that's currently in the budget, proposed budget. Pie chart illustrating the sizes of the budgets, largest budget being that of electric with thirty-four percent, next largest is general fund with twenty-eight percent, gas fund is the third largest with eighteen percent, and water and sewer fund is fourth largest with eleven percent, that's pretty typical of the past budgets. Talk a little bit about water and sewer rates, there is a proposed seven and a half percent increase in the base tier due to increased operation and maintenance costs. This is an increase of last year, over last year, we had a five percent increase last year, we have a proposed increase in monthly base rate from six dollars and ninety cents to seven dollars and twenty-five cents, this is a five percent increase, we had a fifteen percent last, fifteen percent increase last year. Proposed base tier rate would equate basically to around five dollars and nine cents to the average person who uses residential customer, I'm sorry, who uses seventy-five hundred gallons of, of water and sewer. Another item for change, we've updated the tier consumption, the first tier currently is at zero to ten cubic feet, we want to reduce that to zero to eight consumptions, this corresponds with the changes in the consumption over the past couple of drought years in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And lastly, we want to increase the tap fees in the water area. With these changes being made, we will still remain as being one of the lowest in the area, although we will be dealing with the deteriorating infrastructure and revenue sources, and the water and sewer capacity fees will, will remain at one hundred percent. Just a, just a graph showing that where we are now, if you look over to the far left-hand side, we are, our current rates, the next one is our proposed rates, and then you can see the surrounding areas of where we are and related to them, our total water and sewer bill would still remain lower than any other surrounding folks. And I would like to let mom share a little bit of information with you.
Real quickly, we'll go through this, I, I know a lot of you have seen it before, but we'll definitely try to hit the high points. Call your attention to the capacity fee column here, you can see back in two thousand and five, we're sitting pretty stable at one point three million, and as of two thousand and thirteen, that same revenue stream netted us fifty-three thousand dollars, pretty significant drop. Net available revenue, that's a term we use internally, it's just, it's essentially the difference between gross revenue and gross expenses, it's, it's what the rates will generate for us to reinvest in capital improvement, replacement, repair. You see a pretty dramatic drop there as well, we were steadily bringing in three and a half million in two thousand and five, and last year, you see it dropped to about a million. And in the middle years, it has been significantly lower than that, so we have, we have seen a dramatic drop in those two sources of revenue.
Back up, please. And I, I won't interrupt too much, but I think that outside column is pretty important, because not only do you have the difference in the numbers between the years, but there is accumulated difference between each year as you add across the years, and that builds up over years. If you go back and do the math on those, the difference between the years and add them together, it's probably fifteen to twenty million dollars, and I know that some of the information that we give later, people are kind of shocked and go, well, how did this happen? If you pull fifteen, twenty million dollars out of the water utility, that's what happens.
It looks very different.
Yes.
Okay. Much of the same information in a different format, but a couple of things to draw your attention to, this blue line right here that you see dipping lower, that is the trend in actual water consumption, you can see we peaked right here in two thousand and six at around thirteen and a half, this two thousand and thirteen number is ten point six eight, so that is a very dramatic drop in the amount of water that we're selling. The other issue I'd call your attention to are the, the red vertical bars here, you see they're relatively flat. In each one of these years, there's an annualized four point four percent rate increase, and that rate increase is being consumed by the reduction in water usage, so we are essentially operating in, in current times on the same revenue that we had in two thousand and five despite the rate increases that we've had. We'll go through a couple of specifics, these are the areas where we have issues that we're going to have to address, there, there are going to be big impacts on our budget, and there are things that we need to enter into a conversation early about so that we can do the proper planning. This is the water treatment plant, this is as it sits today. We'll look at a couple of things here, I'll call your attention to the sedimentation basins here, this group in seventy-one, original to the plant, an expansion in seventy-four, gave us these, we'll also be looking at the number two high service building and the two million gallon clear well, which is this large concrete structure here. On this slide, the, the thing that you can't see is inside this building, and you can see the division in the brick here, the, the original water plant was this structure right here, and inside the third floor here are all of the chemical tanks for processed chemicals that we use, they're the original tanks at the plant, they were sized when the plant was a fraction of its rated capacity now, and all of that leads up to is the tanks are undersized, and it puts us in an operational corner because we can only take deliveries of full loads of chemicals. We have to run one of those tanks to the point that you can barely measure what's in it just to fit a full load of chemicals inside of it, so we need to do some work on those tanks. Unfortunately, the people who designed the plant originally did not anticipate that, and the only way to work with the tanks we have would be to cut the top of the building off, take the tanks out and reconfigure them, but our, our preferred solution, and the one that we have been advised by engineers, would be to build a tank farm external and then use that going forward, and Rebecca, if you'll, you'll click, that has been given to us at a two and a half million dollar project. Let's go to the next slide. This is, these are the, the sedimentation basins that I refer to, this is a detail of the front of those basins, I call your attention to the concrete here, you can see where it is, it is in need of some repair, there's, it's compromised structurally on these, these areas, this is nineteen seventy-one concrete, and, and the best information that we've got is this is due to the extremely soft water that Carter Swell has out of the lake, and what it's doing is it's dissolving the mineral content of the cement, the cement leaves, and all you have left is the aggregate out of the concrete, and this is happening in all of the basins that were done, or were built, constructed in seventy-one and in seventy-four, if you'll click on there. Here's another picture of that, you see where the wall of the basin has completely been penetrated by the water, there is a hole approximately the size of your finger all the way through this, and this is indicative of the same type of problem that you see throughout these structures in multiple locations, and our cost on rehabbing all these structures is four million dollars, and this is a very good number, we're actually doing some filter rehab right now, which is essentially the same type of work, so we just took those unit prices and applied them to these, these basins and came up with this number, and that's where we landed.
Probably important to note, too, that as we go through these, that none of these are budgeted.
None.
Yeah.
Zero, yeah. This is the two million gallon clear well, the large concrete structure, obviously, you can see the cracking in the foundation, the walls of this structure, in this, you see the dark vertical stains, this is water actually leaking, it's coming all the way through the wall of the structure. This has been going on for well over ten years, it's something that is, it's a, beginning to be a pressing issue, it's something we're going to have to do. The, the fix for this is a coating on the inside of it, no one is willing to guarantee that that coating will stop the problem, they're reasonably sure that that will stop the problem, and the cost on this is estimated to be about three hundred thousand dollars. The next structure we'll look at is our mud pond, the, the sedimentation basins that we need to rehab, the stuff that settles in them, this is where it goes, this pond's been in use since, I believe, the mid to late eighties. The having this pond has saved us approximately a million dollars a year in operating costs during that period of time, unfortunately, it's just full now. This picture from two thousand and ten, we chose this purposely, if you went out there today and looked at it, there'll be about, I don't know, eight to ten inches of water over the top of this, you'll look at it and go, it's pond, what's the problem? But this is what's underneath it, and it won't be long before this thing fills up, and those solids will be going over through this structure, which will cause us to violate a permit that we have with EPD, and bad things will ensue. The, the fix for this is to dredge the pond, is to clean it out, it is the best solution for handling solids on a life cycle cost basis, but it's a six or seven hundred thousand dollar project in and of itself. This is our high service building, this building houses the large pumps, the thousand horsepower pumps that push water out to the entire distribution system, you see this blue pipe here, we zoom in a little bit, you notice the black horizontal line in the wall here, and this is a detail of that, in two thousand and nine, I believe it was, we had to do a stabilization project on the foundation of this building, you see a large block of concrete here. When that project was completed, this crack gauge was installed to monitor the progress of the building to ensure that stabilization was achieved, and we got good success on the south side where we did the project, but we have sediment, sedimentation still taking place on the north side of the building, and at some point, this is going to have to be addressed if it continues to progress.
How wide is that? We talked about that in the earlier.
Yeah, that crack itself, you could probably stick your fingers into it, and, and it existed when the, when the two thousand and nine work was done, that crack has widened by about four millimeters since that work, so that's, that's the progress we've made in, in that amount of time. The fix on this, based on the historical cost, would be six to seven hundred thousand dollars, and bear in mind, this, this is a critical building, we, we can't have it falling in on the pumps that pump the water, we're out of, out of business without it. Put this in just as a, as a note to everyone, the highlighted items, this is a report we get from EPD, it's, it's our significant deficiencies on our sanitary survey, and the reason it's here is, is that all of these things at the water plant are not as simple as we'll fix them when we get the money to, this is on EPD's radar, and should they lose patience with us or choose to do so, they can force our hand through a consent order that would, would set the timetable outside of our control, so that's another issue to consider when, when thinking about these things.
Does that include fines?
I'm sorry?
Would that include fines?
No.
Okay.
It would be a thou shalt by this date.
Okay.
That's it.
And if you don't, then fines.
Okay, okay.
Yes. This is the wastewater plant, same operation here, just talk you through some of the projects, we'll be looking at these, this is bioreactor one and two, polishing stage number two, we'll take a look at the south electrical building and the screw lift pumps here, and the, the big number here is, is going to be driven off an acronym that will, will give us all headaches, and it's TMDL, you may or may not be familiar with it, and it is, stands for total maximum daily load, and what the state's doing is they are doing a huge study in the entire basin to determine what the assimilative capacity of nutrients are in the whole system, and what that means to us is, is that we will get a discharge permit that limits the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus that we can discharge out of the plant. If we are lucky, we will get a one part per million permit, there are other places that have a point one part per million discharge permit, and that vastly changes the game in terms of cost and complexity. Should we get the one million, or one part per million permit, our cost on the plant as it exists is twenty-five million dollars. our cost on the plant as it exists is twenty-five million dollars. That doesn't buy us one additional drop of capacity. And essentially what's happening is, is you're building a water treatment plant on the back end of your wastewater plant. And that's where the, the huge cost comes in.
What'd you say, the deadline, twenty twenty, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty?
Yeah, twenty twenty's our best guidance on, on when that shoe could drop. They expect to have the study done then. I can, I can tell you, it has been pushed back multiple times. So if we're lucky, we may get another pushback, but that's a good date.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the decking on the bioreactors, those large concrete structures that you see as you drive by the plant. Uh, you can see the spalling of the concrete, the cracking. Um, these structures were built in mid-eighties. Uh, they have been operated continuously since then. Uh, if, if in worst case scenario, if we have to redeck these structures, totally take them off and replace them, it's a, it's gonna be a big project. This is another shot. This is a structural member that holds these mixing apparatus up. You can see the cracking in it, chunks falling off of it. It's just indicative of how the whole thing looks. The total cost to rehab these two basins is a million and a half dollars. Next, we're looking at, uh, we're looking at our main power breaker. Uh, this is actually what used to be our spare. Um, we had a breaker fail and had to replace it. And this is a thirty-plus thousand dollar breaker. And we have not been able to purchase another one because of budget constraints. If this breaker fails because of this storm that we're having outside, the only way that we will have to operate the wastewater plant will be on a diesel generator until we get another one of these.
Lead time?
Lead time is about eight weeks, the last time we checked. And that is, that makes me extremely nervous every time there's a clap of thunder outside.
Yeah.
This is indicative of a larger problem. We, we have the same type of problem. We used to be able to call to Atlanta and get certain critical spares in a matter of days. And now what we're finding is that the lead time on those critical spares is measured in weeks, even months in some cases.
Is that because they keep less inventory, you think?
It is. It's, they, they keep less inventory of everything. Um, we need to find about a hundred thousand dollars over the near term to, to purchase and shelve some of these critical spares to get us out of these corners that we're in operationally, where if, if anything goes wrong with this thing, we're just, we're in, we're in bad shape. Uh, this is the decking on P two. This is the other large aeration basin, um, on the north end of the plant. You can see where the decking has actually failed. It has cracked and fallen into the basin. And the, the important part here is, is this is one of the mixers. And underneath this apparatus is a large prop. It looks like the blender, the blade in the bottom of your blender. And that prop alone is about a fifty thousand dollar item, connected to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar gearbox, connected to an eighty thousand dollar motor. And if we drop one of these large panels on that thing when it's operating, it's gonna do catastrophic damage to some very expensive equipment. And we, we really got to get this solved. There is some money in the budget for a patch for this, this year, just to protect that rotating equipment. But again, redecking these things is gonna be a million dollar project just on this basin alone. It's twice the size of the other two. Um, next, we're looking at the screw lift pumps. These are what lift the wastewater into the plant that allow it to flow through the remaining process through gravity. And in this photo on this number one, uh, screw right here, you'll see that it's corroded. Uh, it's discolored. And what happens is, is once the protective coating wears off, the edge of that vein begins to wear very fast. And as that, that edge wears, the gap between the vein and the floor increases and allows water to slip past. So if this screw was designed to pump five million gallons in pristine condition, over time, it wears to a point where it'll only pump four, three and a half. So when we get flows that one screw should handle, we have to turn on a second. And now we're using more power to pump the same water. Rehab of these screws is about fifty thousand dollars a piece. We have four in the secondary, four in the primary. These are the ones that need it worse, so it's about a two hundred thousand dollar project. Uh, this is, is tough to tell what you're looking at. You're looking at a detail of the roof of the Anheuser-Busch tank. Uh, this is rebar in that concrete structure in the roof. It's, it's come through the roof. The roof is just worn away. If we're not able to fix this through spot repairs, the worst case scenario would be to do an overlay of the whole tank. It would basically be like putting a rubberized membrane over the top of the whole tank. And that's a hundred thousand dollar project. Um, this one is one we'll be studying. We, we have a glimmer of hope that we're not gonna be worst case, but that, that we could see this number. Here, we're looking at, at something that's just indicative of a problem that we face every day. Tonight, we'll be buying parks to replace inventory and this is where those parks go. This is a broken pipe, sewer pipe, uh, on Industrial Park Road. We went in to take a look at the blockage, found it full of gravel, uh, jetted it out with the truck. And here you see the broken pipe and the offset that resulted. Go ahead and get to the next slide. This is a similar type problem. This is on Opel Street. But here, we have root intrusion into clay pipe. This is a very common problem. Clay pipe is pervasive in our system. These two projects alone, if, if we were to go out and fix them, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of forty or fifty thousand dollars. Uh, they're very deep. They're in difficult locations. They're complex pieces of, of the, of the system. Currently, we budget seventy thousand dollars total for sewer maintenance annually. So, so when we encounter problems like this, they are a huge issue because they eat up the entire amount that we budget for all the other sewer maintenance. Um, we need to find a way to bring that number up. The reality of it is, is if we can plan these things and have some money set aside to do them, I think we can get a little better pricing on them rather than continually coming in here and doing them sort of as an emergency basis. Um, this is the one I, I really like to leave you with. And this is the, this is the one that, that, that makes everybody kinda step back a little bit. But it's, it's the one that we really need to talk about and really need to, uh, put some, some thoughtful consideration into. If you notice, this is a valve that we took out of the ground about three months ago, about a block from here. And it says right here, the Bourbon Copper Hydrant and Foundry Company. And if you read back into the history of Cartersville, the Bourbon Hydrant and Valve Company supplied the original eight miles of water pipe hydrants and valves when the water system started here. Um, go ahead and hit the next slide. This is what the inside of that valve and pipe looked like. This valve went into service in eighteen eighty-nine. Grover Cleveland had just left office. Yes, exactly. I had to look that one up. But Grover Cleveland had just left office when this valve went into service. The issue here is, we all think of pipes failing when water shoots out of the ground and we go, ah, that's wrong, go, go fix that. Well, that's, that's one way. But look at the inside of this. This is how they fail also. And this is the part you, you don't see and you can't really fathom until you look inside one. We, we got a, an award for drinking water tonight, best tasting. But when you run it through that, it gets harder to win those awards. And this is, this is a problem that it's, it's buried and it doesn't get talked about. It's something that we see and we kinda know. But I wanna start showing you these things. And the real nightmare about this one, go ahead Rebecca, is the amount of this stuff that we've got. We have an inventory of the pipe that we have. There is forty thousand linear feet of four inch, one hundred and twenty-five thousand feet of six inch, forty some odd thousand feet of eight inch and fifty thousand feet of tin. And it dwindles pretty quickly from there. It's a lot of pipe. And if you put the current replacement dollars that we pay now for the minimum line size that we put in against that footage, you get fifty million dollars. Now, this doesn't have to happen next year. It, but it is something that is going to have to start being discussed and done to get rid of this pipe. I mean, we, we still have a considerable amount of pipe that's over a hundred years old. And we have a world of pipe that's over seventy years old. And seventy years old is the engineered lifetime for double iron pipe. So we're, we're at the end of that pipe's lifespan. And I believe that's all I have.
For, for those that are here looking at that image, I know when we had our budget meeting, you had mentioned, um, I mean, that sediment, that's the water that goes there. There's not a safety issue, there's not a quality issue.
No, absolutely not.
That's related to that. I just wanna make sure that's really clear.
It's, it's iron. Um, it is, it is an iron supplement. But unfortunately, with these cast iron pipes, you put water in an iron pipe and you get rust every time. They're unlined and.
It ties more flushing or there're pressure variations, you may get brown water off.
That, that's what causes brown water. Either the velocity change or the pressure change breaks it loose and that's, that's what stains your water. Thank you.
If I might, before you move on, I think the critical thing to notice here is the drop in consumption, the fact that we don't have the margins relative to revenue that we had in the past. We've got capacities in our plants. Uh, we really need growth or a large water user to, to help us get the revenue that we need to repair some of this. And the, within the current budget year, Tom mentioned it back on one of the other slides, but this, uh, state required adjustment to the water utilities of one point three million dollars is money that he could otherwise use to do some of these improvements. But we're having to relocate it for the road project. So that is making a situation that's already dire even more so.
So how do we approach dealing with this?
Approach what?
We've got a problem, obviously.
Yes.
So.
Either through growth or we're going to have to move away from. There are a couple of trends in this budget that are concerning, that may or may not change. Uh, the drop in consumption in water and the drop of, of sales tax. Either, either growth turns around and, and those come back or we move away from those as sources of revenue. That's, that's no surprise to you, I, I'm sure. That, that's the answer. Really, it'd be great if we had another bottling company.
Continuing on, if you'll look at the next slide that presented the electric comparison for residential rates. The red line is Georgia Power. The black line is Cartersville. Obviously, Cartersville Electric is below the competitors. This next slide is moving on to the gas, natural gas costs. You can see at the bottom of the page where Cartersville Gas is nine hundred and nine dollars for average cost annually versus Gas South at the top, at the upper end, at almost eleven hundred and sixty dollars. This buzz also has, uh, performance measurements. We started this about three years ago. These are based on departmental levels. They're linked to department goals and they're, they show historical performances along with the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen targets. And next, we have the goals from the visiting session. These are the goals that we, we're talking about in the visiting session. Downtown parking study, it's currently being done in-house. Parks and Recreation Referendum, we've discussed that earlier. Development of Infrastructure Plan and Capital Equipment Plan, again, being done in-house. And some of it's got the, uh, accompanying the budget. Software upgrade, uh, while this is not in the budget, we are reviewing vendors. This is being done in-house. We have nothing to report on at this point in time as we're still reviewing the vendors. Making a building study, initial review has begun, again, being done in-house. The evaluate, evaluation of the pension, uh, plan, I mentioned that earlier, again, being done in-house by the retirement board. We're still in the infant stage of that and will hopefully have something to come back to you folks with in six or eight months. And the last but not least is the salary study update. This has been completed and funds have been increased, included in the current budget document. And in conclusion, the city will continue to strive to provide services at lowest cost possible for the citizens. Uh, we, this is what we've been doing and this is what we'll strive to do. Next. Also in conclusion, just a few more highlights. The budget is a collection of pass-through for the city property taxes for the city school system. Fund, have included funding for the expenses of the Cartersville Marshall County Department of Economic Development. Have funding for historic preservation and code enforcement staff. Funding for the operation of the city's, and let me repeat that, operation of the city's park system. Funding for police zone commanders. Funding for the operation of the publicly owned utilities. And last but not least is the funding for capital expenses that have been postponed over the past several years due to lack of funding. That is the budget presentation for the evening.
I mean, if I might, just a couple more comments. The, the budget is down slightly. There's no cuts in service, there's no property tax increases. The trends that are impacting the budget are the falling sales tax. Now granted, we've seen it turn around a little bit in the last couple of months, but I don't know if that constitutes a trend. And obviously, the drop in water consumption is critical. Um, we've got a salary adjustment in, that's, we've had one in six years. And this is part of our fixed costs, whether we like it or not. And to continue to ignore it is just gonna make that hill a little harder to get up in the future. Uh, we've juggled transfers a bit to make budget balance. There are some companion pieces with the budget that are not in the budget. Dotha Ferry Road financing and the parks financing. Uh, all rates are as is, except for the water rates that are up seven and a half percent. And this budget is down a net of six positions over, uh, over the present year. Uh, next year, or in next, uh, meeting, we'll focus a little bit on gas, electric and public works to, to kinda go over some of their needs, but to reassure you that the situation is not as dire as, as it is in water. So, uh, I don't know if you've got questions for, for Tom or, or any of the staff that we'll try to answer. And I, I hope I answered your questions sufficiently and, and I wasn't too short with that. That's an important question.
Any other discussion? I'll just say that I know that every year, you know, even although thing seems, things seem to be getting a little bit better from an economy standpoint. You know, we've navigated some pretty rough waters since, uh, over the last six, seven years. And it's, uh, it's, that's, that's the product of the, the people in this room and the people that work for the city and the, and the budget, the, the financial decisions that are made. So, um, you know, we've been tasked since the time that I've been in office is as long as there's no reduction in services and there's no increase in the mileage rate, go ahead and make the magic happen. And, and y'all have done that. And so I thank you for that. And it's, I know it's a, it's easy for us to give you those parameters. It's a lot more difficult for you to meet them. So, um, certainly wish, uh, we had more and that money was flowing like honey like it was about ten, twelve years ago. But, uh, but I do think it's worth noting, again, when you take a look at the size of, of our community as it's grown and the size of our personnel and the size of our, of our budget, where we have, we've really, and the, and the number of services that we're providing, there's been an awful lot of growth in the, in those areas without seeing an awful lot of growth in, in the size of the government and, and the cost of running the government. So that doesn't just, that doesn't just happen. So there's been a lot of work to go in. I just wanna commend those that, that play a part, every single person that works for the city of Cartersville and, and including the folks that are in this room. So, thank you.
Okay. Water rate.
All right, next item, uh, we're gonna talk about water rates.
That is correct. Honorable Mayor and Council, in order to balance the water and sewer fund for, for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget, had to increase several rates. I'm gonna go from real quick. The first one is, is like I said earlier, the seven and a half percent increase to the actual water rate system for, uh, residential users. This will allow the water department to continue to maintain the existing water and sewer system as well as update and expand as necessary. Yes, the combined estimated increase for residential water and sewer user who uses seventy-five hundred gallons is roughly five dollars and nine cents a month. Second increase is a proposed five percent increase in the base water monthly, water, water and sewer rates. The current base monthly fee is six dollars and ninety cents. Proposed is going to seven dollars and twenty-five cents. This is an increase of thirty-five cents a month. Third proposed change is the water and sewer rate structure in, in the, uh, monthly tier consumption. The first tier currently is set at zero to ten consumptions. And we're proposing that we go to zero to eight consumptions. Again, as I said earlier, this is a change needed to correspond with the changes that we had in the droughts in two thousand that we had in the droughts in 2008 and '09. Also, the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District, which the Carthageville Water Department is a member of, strongly encouraged us to take a look at our structure and make changes accordingly. And finally, the last change or proposed increase is to the actual water taps. The current water tap fees are using material pricing from 2008, and the charges that we're making now are not incorporating the pricing of the actual materials themselves. With these proposed changes, again, city of Carthageville residential water and sewer customers will remain one of the lowest in the surrounding counties and municipalities. And the increases are needed to maintain the existing system and plan for necessary future growth.
Okay. Questions for Tom on this specific part of the budget, or this proposed rate increase, rather? All right. Once again, on these last, these previous items and this item, we don't vote on these tonight. We'll take them up for consideration in our next council meeting. And thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have perhaps the lightning round. Appointments to a couple of different areas. And Mr. Menino, if you'll pick up the Board of Zoning Appeal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The first one is the mayor's appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Currently, Lamar Penley was the appointed member by the mayor. It's a two-year term as opposed to a four-year term for the other appointed members. And from my understanding, you wish to renominate Lamar to stay on that board, and he is willing to continue to serve, so...
Absolutely. All right. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve his appointment.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is appointments to the Carthageville Building Authority. And the terms of Sam Grove and Jerry Mylum are set for renewal, and I'm proposing both of them to continue on that capacity. And Chair, will entertain any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Courier, you have a resolution for the downtown bid district.
Yes, Mayor and Council, there is no change from the public hearing that was held on May 1st, asking for approval of the resolution to approve the business improvement district budget amendment for the downtown business district.
Thank you, Tara. Since we had a public hearing last time, there's not one required this time. It is the second time around. And Chair, will entertain any further questions, discussion, or motion.
I do have one question right quickly.
Yes.
How many facade grants do you think we do a year?
About eight. We gave, well, closer to 10. We gave just over $8,000 in this current fiscal year.
Could you have done more if you had the money? Did you have people wanting it and we didn't have the funds?
No, we had the money available. So, we are working to try to educate property owners and business owners on those available funds.
The reason I was asking is we had allotted 12, 2.5 for downtown improvement, the facade grant specifically, and then promotions was the 35%. I just wondered why we didn't consider flipping that a little bit?
Well, we thought there wasn't anything in there for promotions previously, and so we...
And there was not?
There was not, no. So, we have added that.
Can we change those percentages last year, or was it even more recently than that?
They, to my knowledge, have not been changed since this was implemented in 2002.
Okay. Never mind. Mistake it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. Tara, how many, since some owners own more than one building, how many owners do we actually have downtown? Do you know?
There were 131 that actually pay the additional mileage rate. Certainly, the churches and government facilities do not pay.
So, 131 owners own one or more buildings. Is that the way I should interpret that?
I don't know that I have that number off. There's 131 properties that do pay. So, certainly, there are owners who own additional properties. I don't know what the total number of property owners only.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Ms. Courier? If not, motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Grove?
Our first meeting in July would be regularly scheduled to fall on the 3rd, which is the Thursday before the 4th of July weekend. In talking with council, we came up with a July 1st date that you all would be amenable to meeting on that week, which would be a Tuesday. And if you choose to pass this and move that date to Tuesday for the meeting, and staff recommend...
It's Tuesday, July 1st, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. We, next item, please.
Yeah, this is the annual agreement we have with the Optimus Club to put on the 4th of July celebration. It covers such things as the furnishing police officers to police the event, firefighters, coordination of EMS, a fire truck for the fireworks event, payment of $2,000 for fireworks. Also goes into splitting of the $2 parking charge between the city and the contracting. There is a new feature that I'm sure it's going to be a good one, and that is the subcontractor JRM Management Services to help the Optimus put on the event. Other than that, the agreement is unchanged and is approved in the past and is recommended for your approval.
Any discussion? If not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hassabrock, you have the next item, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We bring before you a request to approve a resolution that would authorize yourself to execute power sales contracts for Plant Vogel Units 3 and 4. And what this, the contracts would allow MEAG to finalize loan guarantees from the Department of Energy. And they've delivered us the contract, and it's in, it's called substantial form. It's all but finalized.
Will you read that to us?
Yes.
The city attorney has read it, though.
City Attorney, it's, David Archer has been given a copy of this, and he's reviewed it and given his approval on it. And what's transpiring is the MEAG's, like I said, MEAG's in the final stages of negotiation to get these DOE loan guarantees. And so, the, when they reach final resolutional notes, they would deliver us the final contracts, but time is of the essence. We're hoping to, by getting these contracts, we can substantially lower our interest rates by having these DOT, or DOE loan guarantees. And it's, over the life of the, over the life of the loan, it's going to save annually $40, $45 million to MEAG. And our portion's going to be in the neighborhood of 5% of those savings. And so, when they deliver it, when, like I said, when they deliver the final contract, if you'll go ahead and pre-approve authorization to final signing, then expedite the timeframe of this, of this project.
When do you, I know you...
Any day now.
Any day now, okay.
Yes.
Very good.
So, we're asking you to approve the resolution that's going to give you the authorization to sign.
Now, Don, when the new changes come in, our city attorney also looks over those.
Yes, ma'am. The city attorney will, the city attorney will be given the final contracts with the changes and the SAM. Mr. Grove will have the opportunity also...
And you'll be looking at them also?
Yes, ma'am.
City Attorney Review. I've been...
I mean, basically, this is something y'all have done in the past for numerous other contracts. I mean, this is a little more formal because MEAG's bonding in other capacities, they require these big lengthy resolutions that Don has there to show you. But in a nutshell, what you're doing is the resolution is authorizing the approval of this contract amendment, subject to final approval by the city attorney, electric superintendent recommendations to the mayor and city manager for it to be signed. I mean, that's what's happening in a nutshell.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion or questions? And if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Don. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you, Polk Works is bringing a contract with Rett, McDuff, and Associates to perform a flood study on Terrell Heights subdivision. They've had some localized flooding on Woodland Drive, and hopefully, the night's not going to be one of those issues where they have it again, but very possible. So, we are just requesting the approval of this contract, and this will, this study will help us determine where we may be able to do some improvements.
Okay.
This is a budgeted line item.
Thank you, Wade. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilson? If there are none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Send it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones, you've got the next item, the novation agreement.
This is essentially an agreement that we need to put in place. It's a paperwork cleanup, for lack of a better term. Jordan Jones and Golding, JJ and G, who's been our engineer for decades, was acquired by Jacobs Engineering in 2011. And when that happened, we had several existing contracts that were in various states of completion. And if I understand this correctly, and I'll defer to council for a more detailed explanation, essentially, this allows us to substitute Jacobs where JJ and G exists on those current contracts, clears up any legal ambiguity that might result from that Jacobs name not being on those contracts.
That sums it up pretty much in a nutshell. Basically, it's a name change.
Switcheroo.
All right. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Bob.
Mission Road Gravity Sewer Phase 1, we have completed that work. As you know, we had to do some additional work there because of aged infrastructure that failed. The sum total of this, when all the dust settled, was we had some unused quantities in the original contract. Net result is we are reducing that project by $13,054.76, and we can put that one to bed.
All right. Any discussion or motions for approving a change order that saves us money?
Authorize a motion.
Boy, I'll second that one.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, Mr. Jones.
This will be a restock of distribution and collection system inventory. These are the parts that we use to maintain the water and sewer lines day-to-day. We try to do these quarterly. We're a little off schedule because of a purchase we had to make to support the Tennessee Street project, but this is essentially a scheduled purchase for us. Went out to all our regular bidders. HD supply was low at $8,479.28. It's a budgeted item in maintenance to water mains and would recommend your approval of that purchase.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Didn't have to talk that time. Good. Chief Culpepper, some police vehicle purchase.
Yes, Mayor and Council. On March 12th, we had a police vehicle destroyed in a pursuit. A vehicle pulled out and struck the vehicle, and it totaled the vehicle. Since that time, excuse me, we've, excuse me, I get choked up when I talk about cars. We've asked for, we've sent out a request for bids on the internet via the city's website. We only received one bid back. That was from the local dealer, Robert Lorre, for a Dodge Chrysler priced at $23,571, which actually is about $1,800 less than the vehicles we bought from them last year. Most of the funds used to pay for this vehicle will be from an insurance reimbursement, leaving approximately $4,500 out of property and casualty to cover the rest. And I'm asking the mayor and council to approve a purchase up to $35,000 for the vehicle and any associated equipment that we may need in the event that some of the vehicle, the equipment that we're recycling, such as a camera, computer, printer, radio, screen, cage, that sort of thing, are not operable for a vehicle and we can't use them again. We would have to replace them. As it stands now, most of that equipment is reusable. So, we anticipate coming in significantly under that.
Okay. And that additional between the $4,500 is covered by property and casualty versus the $35,000 that you're asking council to approve?
Yes.
That budgeted, or is that, where does that additional money come from, I guess? I'm sorry.
Well, it's not, it's not a budgeted item. We're just not sure exactly what all of the equipment, if it will fit into a newer model vehicle. Because as the vehicles change, sometimes the seating configuration changes, which means the containment unit has to change. And we really anticipate that being about the only thing that we would need to buy in addition to whatever we already have. There's very little that we would have to acquire. A blue light and the containment unit and the markings for the vehicle are, would be essentially it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Riggs and then Mr. Anderson.
Mayor, this is to purchase 200 meters to replenish our stock, and we're recommending the low bid, equipment controls at $14,400.
Okay. Pretty straightforward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Come on, Rick.
Yes, Mayor and Council. As you recall, back in March, I came to you about the first compressor of the pool pack at the Senior Aquatic Center. It went out, well, there's two in there, and then the second one went out about two weeks ago. And I spoke with Mr. Grove, received permission from him to continue the project with Honeywell. And now, I'm requesting that we be able to pay our bill in the amount of $9,918 for this second compressor, and it includes a five-year warranty.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Not So Fast, we've got a couple of items added to the agenda. Chair, will entertain a motion to add those two items.
Send it.
Got a motion, I'll consider carries the second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Two items added to the agenda. Mr. Menino, you have the first one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. 28 Hamilton Township was purchased as part of the First Time Home Fires program. They have fulfilled their obligations under that program. This is a quick claim deed, release. Staff recommends your approval to authorize this release.
Okay. There's no discussion, a motion would be in order.
Send it. To approve.
Which one of y'all made the motion, which one you made the second?
I'll make the second.
All right. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item is approved unanimously. Mr. Grove, you have the final item on this evening's agenda.
I'm requesting that council approve payment to Georgia Municipal Association for our annual membership dues, which amount to $6,800, no, $6,382.65.
Okay. Any discussion, or if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item is approved unanimously. Anybody else that has business that needs to come forward, council this evening. Everybody boo Tara as she comes.
Boo Tara. Boo. We stayed this long. And real quick, tomorrow night is our first Friday downtown luau. So, we have incentives for people to spend some money downtown. We'll have some entertainment in the plaza. And then, our farmer's market has started every Wednesday night from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Saturday morning, 7:00 a.m. to noon. We are sold out. It's a great market. We had a good turnout last night. And then, our Tom Clayton Memorial Car Show, presented by the Carthageville Shrine Club, is tomorrow night. So, going to be a busy weekend in downtown and encourage folks to come out and enjoy.
Thank you, Tara. I will also mention today, if you hadn't already heard, we have got a new company coming to Carthageville and Barthell County in effort of the Joint Development Authority. Thank you to Melinda and her department. But we've got Suriyo rugs coming to the industrial park. They'll be bringing 250 existing jobs from Gordon County and adding another couple hundred. It'll be their corporate headquarters, going to have a lot of graphic designers and marketing and sales individual sized warehouse employees. About a million square feet, $33.5 million in investment. And so, it's a good day for our entire community as we continue to work hard to create jobs. And I'll just say, stay tuned, there's more of that coming. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Wow.
Wow. A little violence.
Yeah. I'm scared. I got it.[1781.13]